Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning and welcome to the first meeting of the Overview and Scrutiny Management Board for the new council term. My name is councillor Philip Roberts. I am the chairman of the board. Kane Parkinson, vice chairman of the board, is also in attendance. Streaming arrangements. Can I remind you that the audiovisual feed of this formal meeting is being broadcast live via the county council's website? And all your comments will remain accessible online as the meeting remains, recording remains on the council website. And with this in mind, I would like to welcome members of the public and press watching this live. Welcome to the following executive councillors and executive support councillors who are attending our meeting today. Councillor Sean Matthews, leader of the council. Councillor Tom Catton, executive councillor for resources. Councillor Richard Litchfield, executive support councillor, resources. No, he's not present today, that's right. Welcome to the following members of the corporate leadership team who are present today. Debbie Barnes, OBE. Andrew Crookham, deputy chief, executive and executive director, resources. There was no fire drill planned this morning. In the event of a fire alarm warning, we need, and we need to leave the council chamber through the doors behind you and leave the building through the reception into the front car park. We'll then need to wait in the car park for further instructions. Devices and loops. Can I remind everyone to ensure their mobiles, laptops and iPads are on silent for the duration of the meeting? Also, when invited to speak, can you please ensure that you switch on your microphone? Otherwise, those attending the meeting via Teams and members of the press and public listening to our meeting online will not be able to hear you. Please be aware that you need to speak directly into the microphone to be heard. The hearing loop is now activated. Request to speak will be collated by the vice chairman. If you wish to speak during the meeting, can you please raise your hand and the vice chairman will make a note? We will try to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to ask questions, make contributions. Therefore, I would appreciate contributions to be succinct and concise and also ask that you indicate early when you wish to speak. We will now move on to the formal agenda. Apologies for absence.
Thank you, Chairman. We have apologies from Paul Brewster and we have councillor Dyer replacing councillor Hill for this meeting only.
Declaration to the members' interests. Members of the board are reminded that you only need to declare any relevant interests which have not been declared on your declaration of pecuniary interests form. Do any members wish to declare an interest? I think that's a no. Minutes of the meeting held on the 17th of March 2025. This is to confirm and sign the minutes from the last meeting, excuse me, of the board on the 17th of March 2025 as a correct record. Those can be found on pages five to 10 of the agenda pack. Do I have a proposer? Councillor Matthews and a seconder? Councillor Catton, that's fine. We will now vote on the minutes. Those in favour? Those against? Any abstentions? Thank you. Those minutes agreed as correct and accurate record. This is the first meeting of the Overview and Scrutiny Management Board in this new council team. I would like to begin by expressing my sincere thanks to all those members for the confidence placed in me to serve as chairman. It is an honour and a responsibility I undertake with strong sense of purpose and commitment. Scrutiny plays a vital role in ensuring that our council, decision-making, remains transparent, accountable and in the best interests of the people of Lincolnshire. I am confident that this board, with its collective experience and insight, will continue to approach its work with integrity, diligence and willingness to challenge where appropriate. I look forward to working constructively with each of you and with the officers to uphold the standards of good governance and ensure that scrutiny continues to support effective service delivery and value for our residents. I am also taking this opportunity to remind members of the two upcoming induction sessions pertinent to our role of scrutineers. First date is tomorrow, 30th of May from 10:30 for the scrutiny chairs here in the county offices. And the second is on Monday, the 30th of June on 10am via Teams on Questioning Skills. If you have not already booked them, please speak to Tom Crofts following today's meeting. I have no further announcements to make today. I ensure efficient use of our time. I would like presenters to keep their report introductions brief to allow ample time for discussions and consideration on all items. Executive council announcements. Are there any executive council announcements from councillor Matthews? Councillor Tom Catton? Are there any chief officer announcements from Debbie Barnes, chief executive? Andrew Crookham, deputy chief executive, director of resources?
Nothing for me, thank you, Chair.
Tom, are there any call-ins to consider?
None received, Chairman.
Tom, have we received any councillors calling for action?
None received.
Okay. Thedlethorpe Geological Disposal Facility Community Partnership. The pre-decision scrutiny can be found between pages 11 and 46 of the agenda. This report supports the executive's review of Lincolnshire County Council's continued role in the Thedlethorpe Geological Disposable Facility, known as GDF, siting process. It outlines a proposal, relevant policies and potential local impacts to inform a decision on whether the council should remain involved as a relevant principal local authority or withdraw, ending the current site exploration in Lincolnshire. The executives are due to consider this report for a decision on the 3rd of June 2025. Our actions in terms of the input requests from the board are that members of the Overview and Scrutiny Board, management board, consider the report and determine whether members' support for the recommendation to the executive as set out on page 14 and agree that the board's comments be passed to the executive in relation to this item. This report will be presented by Justin Brown, Assistant Director of Growth. Andy Gutherson, Executive Director of Place, is also in attendance for this item. Before we begin with this item, I would like to set out how this item will be handled as we have a number of speakers. The running order for this will be as follows. Justin Brown, Assistant Director for Growth, will introduce the report. Right, okay. An alteration to that, Andy Gutherson, assistant, oh, hold on, Andy Gutherson will introduce the report. I will then invite David Fannin, chairman of the community partnership, who is in attendance to make a statement. He will have three minutes to address the board. I will then invite board members to ask any clarifying questions at their discretion. The next speaker is Seth Kibird, CEO of Nuclear Waste Services. He will also have three minutes to address the board. I will then invite board members to ask any clarifying questions. Six, the next speaker in attendance is Mike Crooks, chairman of GoTech. He will also have the opportunity to address the board for up to three minutes. I will then invite board members to ask any clarifying questions. Following from our guest speakers, I would also like to invite councillors who are non-board members to address the board regarding any concerns or comments from guest speakers. We'll then take a statement from councillor Bailey Robinson, who represents Saltfleet and the Coates, and councillor Reuben Robinson, who represents Mabelthorpe. This follows a request made by councillors Robinson and Robinson to be present and to address the board today's meeting. Visiting councillors will be allowed to speak for three minutes but not to ask questions. Then we'll have an opportunity for board members to ask any clarifying questions to the visiting councillors. This will then be followed by debate by the board that will consider and comment on the report and highlight any recommendations or further actions for consideration by the executive. Officers will be able to answer questions from the board members as part of their wider debate. However, there will be no further involvement from members of the public and non-members of the board during this part of the item. At the end of the debate, we will consider and vote on the actions required by the board. Now over to you, Justin. Sorry, Justin, Nick. Andy even.
Thank you, Chairman. Apologies, Justin isn't with us today. He's gone down with bronchitis and is struggling to speak, so you've got me. Just for context, Executive Director of Place, I've been directly involved in this project for the period of time that the county council have been involved and have been an official observer to the community partnership, supporting our previous representative on the community partnership, councillor Hill. So, well placed to be able to give you the detail that's in the report. The report provides a history of our involvement as Lincolnshire County Council, sets out some of the key considerations and frames a recommendation based on our current understanding and appreciation of the opportunities and the potential benefits, but also the context of opposition representations in respect of the proposal for the geological disposal facility. It is framed as professional advice to this scrutiny panel and to the executive and other options are set out in the report to enable members to make the appropriate decision. I will recap on some elements of the report but won't go through it in detail. In 2021, the council were formally invited to join the working group that was set up, which subsequently transformed into the community partnership. We previously made a decision, or the executive made a decision, that our representation on that working group and community partnership would be through the auspices of the leader of the council at the time, councillor Hill, who has therefore attended those meetings and been an integral part of that activity since that date. I think it's worth highlighting that the previous discussions that took place prior to that formal invite to join the working group reflected the usual practice of the county council having confidential conversations with developers. That happens quite regularly. A lot of those things don't come to fruition on the basis that they are confidential in confidence conversations and developers sometimes don't then proceed to the next level. So the council's involvement at that stage was appropriate and in keeping with other activities that take place. I think I'll also highlight to you that all of the activities that have been undertaken should all be read and seen in the context of the government policy framework that exists. This is a national initiative framed in a policy context. Therefore, all of the activities that relate to timelines, the process, the potential additional infrastructure investment, the community involvement and the operation of the community partnership and any potential for a test of public support are all framed in government policy. That creates a constraint that all parties have been working to in the context of the opportunities of how certain aspects of the work might have been followed. I think it's fair to say that as a county council, we've been critical at times of the way that policy has constrained the activity, but there's always been that policy position that has been returned to as a justification of how information has been shared. When we joined the community partnership, part of the justification was on the basis that it provided the opportunity for Lincolnshire County Council to better understand what a GDF actually was and the implications of a GDF being brought forward in Lincolnshire. I'll pose three questions if I can at the moment, Chair, which I'll come back to later on. In the context of joining the community partnership to better understand the opportunities, is Lincolnshire County Council now significantly better or suitably informed to understand what the implications of the geological disposal facility are? Does the level of public concern and opposition render our need to have a greater understanding pointless in the context of that public sentiment is now significant for members to make a decision? And thirdly, could further work be justified to better understand the implications of a geological disposal facility and create a set of controls that would enable the county council to take a different role in the process going forward? I'll return to those questions when I wrap up. Another important context in relation to the need for a geological disposal facility. This country has been utilizing nuclear energy since 1956 and it has a stockpile of nuclear waste which it is currently storing in temporary measures. The government has therefore got a requirement and a duty to find a long-term geological, a long-term disposal solution for that waste. About 20 years ago, the Committee on Radioactive Waste Management recommended that long-term underground storage was the appropriate and most suitable technology and solution. That was translated into a white paper in 2008 which established that the recommended approach was a geological disposal facility. The broad headline conclusions was that it was a safe technology, it would bring economic, social and environmental benefits, it was cost-effective. It's worth noting that since that date, a number of other countries have also explored and implemented geological disposal as an appropriate solution. Finland, I believe, are about to open their facility. Sweden have plans approved. France are exploring utilization of similar geology and have an underground research lab which is enabling them to look at the opportunities and the way that this could be delivered. Canada have, in the last few months, identified a willing community. Switzerland have chosen a site and Japan is seeking a willing community. There are a range of other countries also in that process, but what it identifies, this is an internationally recognized approach and suitable way of actually addressing this. Fully recognize that the uncertainty that this creates for the local community creates concerns and those concerns have been well documented and are detailed in the report. I'd also stress though, it's not unusual for a large-scale major development, particularly being brought forward through either an NSIP or a development consent order process, to be a long-winded process. So again, that uncertainty that exists in the local community would not be unique to this community. And indeed, if you've heard the news this morning, there was items in respect of the reservoirs proposed both for the Fens and South Lincolnshire and a similar issue being debated and discussed in the context of the uncertainty that it creates. I've mentioned the geology. The UK has a variety of geologies and the starting point for NWS has been to identify potential suitable geologies for where this storage facility could be located. From a desktop point of view and an understanding of the UK's geology, the Jurassic period clays off the east coast of Lincolnshire create an ideal geology for this type of facility. There are other sites that are being considered and it's probably better for NWS to answer questions specifically on this about the merits of different geologies around the UK, but we have it on good authority that in the context of this point in time, the geology off the coast of Lincolnshire is the most suitable and appropriate. It is similar to the geology in France, so again, going back to the fact that other international communities are looking for similar solutions, there is a precedent that other communities and other countries are looking at similar geology. In addition though to the geology being the starting point for where you locate a facility, there will be a range of other engineered solutions to make sure that the waste is safely stored, including the containers that it's involved in, the backfill, and also there will be a high level of regulation through other agencies to make sure that all of the standards that would be expected to meet would be achieved. That relates to the underground storage element. The other aspect of the scheme is that there needs to be a surface site for where the nuclear waste would be received and then transported underground. And obviously, it's that air, that above-ground facility that has the most direct impact on the local community. The report provides detail in terms of the original approach was intended to look at utilizing the Thedlethorpe refinery site, which was being decommissioned. I think most people will be aware of the other competing interests for other infrastructure proposals in this part of the country and both carbon capture schemes, hydrogen production schemes have both effectively guzzumped the ability of NWS to utilize that site. That resulted in earlier this year that the identification of a wider area focus for a potential surface site, it is a larger area for the area focus, but the ultimate size of the facility would still be expected to be similar to what was always intended on the refinery site, approximately 250 acres. So the ultimate size of the facility and the potential impacts on the facility are unlikely to be different than was originally envisaged. The community partnership that was established, again, is a policy requirement and again, probably David as the chair of that is better placed to answer direct questions in terms of the role of the community partnership. The community partnership must have a relevant principal local authority sitting on the partnership. Both East Lindsay and Lincolnshire County Council have fulfilled that role. East Lindsay withdrew from that role earlier in the year, leaving Lincolnshire County Council as the sole RPLA currently sitting on the community partnership. Key role of the community partnership is to disseminate information but not to be directly an advocate of the proposal. One of the key issues which obviously drives most of the local concerns in respect of the impact of the proposal is that the policy requirement requires there to be a willing community. That has therefore been a clear focus of the work from NWS to inform and advise a community of the impacts. Again, there are well-recorded and documented concerns about whether that approach has been effective and appropriate and again, David may have observations to make in that in the context of the community partnership's role within that. Ultimately, a willing community is enshrined in what's called a test of public support. And if you look at the actual detail of the policy requirement, that test of public support would be expected to take place later in the project development than where we are currently in the development of the activity. That has always been identified as a particular requirement and at that point in time, the community's views and opinions would be a determining factor on whether the scheme was to go ahead in any area, not just in Lincolnshire. That applies equally to other communities that are in this same situation. The community partnership has always indicated that there should be some element of public input into decisions about the RPLA's ongoing involvement. And again, a question I posed at the beginning, in the context of the level of public knowledge, public views at this moment in time, are members comfortable and happy that there is enough understanding of the public's position to therefore drive that decision or whether there should be some further engagement with the public to inform that? There is a high level of vociferous local objection to the proposal. Don't intend to recap in detail of what's in the report, but pages 31 to 34 of the report provide you a summary of that and you'll hear directly from GoTech, who have obviously been directly involved at times as members of the community partnership, but also heavily involved in carrying out their own surveys of local views and opinions. I would just flag though, there are other sources of information and in particular, the Yonder survey identifies that there may be different views and opinions within the local community. That is a survey that has been conducted consistently by Yonder during the period of the community partnership being in existence. Again, that identifies that there are potentially different views and members need to consider the merit and the weight that they give to each of those. Given the opposition that does exist locally, there are some key questions that need to be asked about the approach that's been taken to date and whether that has been effective and appropriate and whether if that was done in a different way, there could be a greater understanding, not necessarily resulting in a different view, but whether actually it's giving the right information to people to come to their conclusions. One thing I'd particularly draw your attention to, and it's detailed in the report, as well as the benefits to the UK of actually having a long-term storage solution for its nuclear waste, there are potential local economic benefits to accrue from this type of proposal. As any developer would, they make the case for the proposal. I would draw your attention to the fact that the report identifies the Midlands Engine independent assessment of some of the economic benefits. That was commissioned before Midlands Engine was abolished, but that report has some degree of rigor attached to it and it raises questions in terms of whether this is a scheme that could bring some long-term benefits to an area that suffers from high levels of unemployment, high levels of deprivation and particularly impacts of seasonality of jobs. The report also details the potential for significant additional infrastructure. Again, don't intend to go through in detail, but section 7.2 of the report details the list of potential areas and the question could be, could be asked of whether this is an opportunity to explore further, whether they are benefits that are actually appropriate, necessary, or whether there are other ways in which the county council could look to facilitate those, those improvements to the area. And if I can conclude, don't, I don't underestimate the day-to-day impact and the concerns that have been raised by local residents. They are largely matters that have been presented to, whether that information has been fully understood, presented in the most appropriate way to any of the parties, including the county council and the district council, but they all relate to matters of safety, process, impact and benefit, which hopefully are summarized in the report in a way that members can actually understand the choices that maybe exist. If the view is that that information hasn't been presented appropriately, as per the recommendation, there is an opportunity to potentially look at whether that information could be presented differently, analyzed differently. So I'd return to the three questions I posed, which I think are a useful way in which members can consider their position this morning and ultimately the advice to the executive and the decision that the executive need to make. Is Lincolnshire County Council significantly better or suitably informed to understand the full implications of the geological disposal facility? As the officer who's been the closest to this over the last four to five years, my honest, professional view is no to that question. Does the level of public opposition render understanding our position, doing more to understand the position pointless? As I've said, the report sets out there are different views and it's for members to determine which weight to give to those different views and opinions. And if in respect of that, there was further work that it felt was appropriate, could Lincolnshire County Council utilize that in a way that they became non-negotiable requirements for NWS to actually deliver against and again, always having the ability at a future point to withdraw? That is always within the gift of the county council as the RPLA. And in that sense, my recommendation in the report is that there is an opportunity to look further but also to actually look at different ways of testing public sentiment. Alternatives are identified in the report, Chairman. Happy to try and answer any questions, but you've also got three people, three organizations in the room who probably have very strong opinions on disparate aspects of this that can help inform the committee's decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Welcome back to you later with questions. Speaker one, I'd like to invite David Fannin, chairman of the community partnership, to address the board for up to three minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here and speak on the experience of the GDF. We have attempted to act as honest brokers in this process throughout the period. I speak in particular for its community members, all of whom live or work in the search area. They're decent, concerned people who've been ready to challenge question and bring local perspective to discussions with the developer. For those who don't know me, after nearly 40 years of public service, I remain a champion for the community and nonprofit sector. My focus is on getting the right result for the people and places within the search area. This statement reflects discussions and insights from the partnership's activities, which really boil down to three key points. First, opinions. The partnership exists to listen across the search area and has heard a mix of opinions, some against the GDF, some for, some undecided. We've heard the concerns of people who lived closest to the proposed surface facility, loud and clear, but we also hear from people who desperately want investment in public services and have met families who are concerned about education, training and future job prospects. A GDF is a multi-generational project and we haven't really heard yet the voice of young people. Second, information. Discussion of the risks, mitigations and impacts, good and bad, has frankly been stifled, leaving space for misinformation and misunderstanding and that's regrettable. The partnership has used its local knowledge, community connections and engagement to identify questions about identify questions about the GDF sighting process, and is frustrated that information and expert knowledge has not been more available sooner. In reality, most people don't know how a GDF would be constructed, or why NWS is so interested in this area. We learned a lot from fact-finding visit to the British Geological Survey, as well as the French underground laboratory, where we met with local people and subject experts. It was, that was illuminating, and I recommend it to anybody who's interested. We also had a detailed briefing on the state of coastal defences by the Environment Agency. And third, the test of public sentiment. There's a clear need to end speculation. The question is how and when. Many have expressed the view that it should be local people who decide. In essence, then, the partnership recognizes concerns are real, and a duty of care should apply to those who live closest to the area of focus, whatever the council decides. The GDF sighting process could have a part to play in securing much-needed investment in public services and infrastructure, and that's simply a fact. If there is to be a test of public sentiment, I urge the council to consider how local people could be involved, who this enfranchises and who is disenfranchised. There are quiet voices, and not everybody is able to vote. Finally, and if I could just take a couple of seconds, it's important to me to put on record the integrity of the community members of the partnership and their commitment to this process until it's fully concluded. Thank you for this time and for listening.
Thank you. I'd like to invite members of the board to ask any follow-up questions in relation to the speaker's statement. councillor Dyer.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and thank you for the two presenters, just presenting your reports just then. Just two questions, really, mainly came from your comments, but Andy, you might be able to help. In respect to coastal defences and the support provider to the Environment Agency, what are the findings so far? If the GDF were to go ahead, what funding would be available for the Environment Agency in respect to the flood defences? But consequently, if the scheme were not to go ahead, what would the impact of that be on the Environment Agency and this council, lead local flood authority, on making sure that the coast is defended well into the future? And then my second question, which came towards the end of your statement, actually, was the test of public support. Do we know at this stage how that would be conducted? Would it be going into a polling station as you would an election, or would that just be members of the community invited to turn up to a village hall and vote? What do we know at the moment about how that would be carried out? Because I think that was an important point that you made, and it's making sure that if the council were to go to a test of public support, how would we make sure that that process is available to everybody in the community? And I think something that you mentioned towards the start of your speech was young people and the voices of young people. And we all know in the UK to vote, you have to be eighteen. For a test of public support, is that, would that be open to younger people within the community, rather than those that are just registered electors? If you could please provide more detail on that, because if the committee were to move to a test of public support today, actually, what that entails and how that support would be tested, I think, is a critical question. And unless I've missed it within the report, that information isn't within the report today. So straight away, I feel quite uncomfortable with moving forward with a test of public support without this information, because essentially, we could be providing a blank cheque to officers and officials and how that's carried out. Thank you, Chairman.
With regards to the question about the coastal defences, I am not technically competent to respond. I think your council officers are far better placed. But the presentation, the briefing we had from the Environment Agency, really brought home to us their concern about the state of the defences and the relative urgency with which they need to be addressed, that this would not, that my understanding is that the GDF is a silver bullet, but it could be part of a solution. So that's what we have learned. Regarding the test of public sentiment, there is guidance in policy, and there are options. Andy Gutherson mentioned processes that other countries have been through, and the mechanisms used haven't necessarily been a straightforward vote of people on the electoral register. There are ten thousand people or so in the search area, not all of them on the electoral register, not all of them able to vote, and young people simply don't have that kind of voice. In other countries, there has been something closer to a deliberative democracy process, and there are ways of doing that, reputable, credible ways of doing that, that enable the whole spectrum of local public opinion to be heard, and all parts of the community. So it wouldn't take much, in my opinion, for the council to consider what some of those alternatives would be, should you move towards a test of public sentiment. And I don't think it would take too much to set up a process, other than simply going to the electoral register.
Thank you, David. Thank you, councillor Dyer, for your question. Could we have a question from councillor Dilks to David Fannin?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, I was a member of the former on the council when it came up in twenty twenty-one. It's been four years, sort of looking at it. I represent an area in the deep south of the county, so a long way away from this site. So I understand the, and I do know the area roughly. However, from what Andy said and colleagues have said, clearly the ground site has changed from what we were looking at over three or four years, and now it's, is it actually still Thedlethorpe? I don't think it is. I get the sense that it's not. But what I really want to know is, has this, has the site moved? Is there a different impact on local communities to, if we were looking at the same original site? So has the impact increased to local communities? It would have been helpful if we'd had maps that we could have seen, and I appreciate there is a poor map in the papers, but it doesn't really help tell anybody anything. So that's my question. Thank you.
David.
I think the material difference is that the area of focus that was announced earlier this year is a greenfield site, and the old gas terminal was clearly a brownfield site. The impact on local communities is not dissimilar. People who are living closest to where the construction work would happen, the access roads would, and railway connection would go through, are going to be affected in the same way. The question is, to what extent there is clarity now about what those impacts are, what the risks are, and how any risks would be mitigated? And I think it's entirely understandable that the local community would be aggrieved at the prospect of a facility appearing afield away from them, or in some cases, almost next door. That's entirely understandable. So, but I think the discussion has to be, and our responsibility for the community partnership, is to talk to people across the whole of the search area, and that's what we've been doing.
Thank you. Councillor Dilks.
I just want to come back. Thank you. I know the Thedlethorpe site, or I did, I went as a journalist in the early seventies. I went and reported on the, on the gas coming in, on the Thedlethorpe site. So I know that site. How far away is the current site, the new site that has suddenly popped up? How far away is that?
It's a matter of a few miles.
A few miles?
Yeah.
How many miles?
Exactly, I couldn't tell you, but it's not, it's not that far. It's a little bit further inland.
Thank you. Councillor Finley, your question to...
Yeah. I've just picked up on, I was going to ask a similar sort of thing to councillor Dyer, regarding public involvement, because obviously, the sighting policy is the key part of this. If it's a willing community, then I think the community needs to have an input. Now, when you read through the report, there's always these positives and positives and how fantastic it is, and I get that. And if, but if NWS are willing to invest, along with the government, up to fifty-three billion pound, then, and this has been going on for four years, the way I see it is, obviously, people don't know whether it's coming or not, people are arms up, you know, thinking, is it coming or not? I don't want it, I do want it. And you read the information about all the positives, what it's for, but at no point do you read in clear, bold indication of best-case scenario. You get that, you don't get worst-case scenario. And people are fearing, thinking, what if there was a major incident? And not one bit of this report, or anything I read, you have to go online and search. And my concern is that, why are they not telling you the worst-case scenario if there was an incident? And why have they not reached out to every single letterbox in Lincolnshire? If they're willing to invest fifty-three billion pound into this project, surely, a small, tiny proportion of that should be made, given, you know, given a questionnaire or an information leaflet, and even supply them all with a return envelope, and allow every single resident in this county a decent period of time to be given every little bit of best-case, worst-case scenario, like I say, worst-case, we don't know, and a return envelope, giving them the opportunity. Because, as we know, postal votes work, as councillor Dyer alluded to, postal votes do work. People prefer postal votes. They can sit at home, they can look at it, drop it in an envelope and in a postmark. So I really do believe that giving every single person in the county, not just in a certain radius, every single person, this affects in Lincolnshire, because ultimately, we in this chamber represent every single person in Lincolnshire. So that's where I believe we should be with it. Every letterbox should be filled, and the worst-case scenario should be made clear to everybody.
Thank you, councillor Finley. David.
As I say, I think it's regrettable that we haven't had the information and access to expert opinion more and sooner, but we have had conversations within the community partnership with the NWS safety expert and a number of other experts, independent as well as NWS. And I think the safety argument hasn't yet been fully exposed to public challenge, and therefore, it's easy for people to see a worst-case scenario and believe that that will happen. So it's easy to catastrophise, and I wouldn't downplay the risk of dealing with nuclear waste, but it's about how that nuclear waste is packaged, how the GDF is engineered, how it's transported, how it's transferred into the GDF facility. And I think people just haven't had the answers yet to some of the questions and concerns that they've had. So I think it's very fair to raise them, but I think we don't know enough yet, and if the council decides to stay in this process for long enough to ask some of those questions, I would hope that NWS would be able to answer some of those questions very quickly, and to give, I don't believe there could ever be a cast-iron guarantee, but it's about risk and risk management and all those mitigations. And we were just starting to get into the, underneath those issues earlier this year, when other events overtook that process. But that information was starting to come to the community partnership, and we were looking to then get that information out into the community. And I think it's a shame that we haven't been able to get to that point earlier.
Thank you, David. Councillor Brooks.
Thank you, Chair. I've just got a couple of questions. I'm really disappointed that this process hasn't been fully transparent from the onset. It could have been done a lot different. Have we got a survey on how this will impact the tourism on the coast? And also the train line? I'm assuming that won't be for public use, it will just be, just for the nuclear waste. Thank you.
David, thank you.
I would love to be able to say we've had all of those impact assessments. We haven't yet. I'm sure NWS will be able to answer that more clearly than I would be able to.
Thank you, David. Any other questions to David? Right, okay. I would like to invite Seth Khybird, CEO of Nuclear Waste Services, to address the board for three minutes. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Seth Khybird, I'm the chief exec of Nuclear Waste Services. We are part of the Nuclear Decommissioning Authority, so our job as a government agency is to manage and clean up the legacy of nuclear in this country. One of our core responsibilities, as we've heard, is to find a suitable site and a willing host community for the GDF, to take the UK's most hazardous radioactive waste. And today, this is about continuing that involvement in the process. First thing I'll say is, whatever your views on nuclear, you know, as was said earlier, we've been a nuclear country since the nineteen fifties, we've benefited from low-carbon electricity, investment and jobs, but it has left behind a legacy of waste to deal with. And is the government's position in line, as we've heard, with kind of best-case precedent around the world, that the best way to do that is a deep geological disposal? But doing nothing is not an option. But crucially, the policy and the approach is to do that with and not to a local community. And that's why the sighting process is about the location and the geology, but also the community and the willing host. So our job is to work with local, in partnership with local communities, sharing information, answering questions and progressing only where there is interest and support. And as your, as the officers' report notes, the, you know, the Canadian example is similar. It took them many years to build up that information and trust with communities. And that's why I think the main point I'll get across here is the, this process does take time. This is not one, it's not something that we can come out with all the answers at once. And the point is, we're working, we're trying to work quite openly, developing those, developing our ideas and the approach with the communities. We've talked a little bit about the impact. By participating, communities help to shape this infrastructure project, and it could be transformational for the local economy. And we've been committed to working with you, with employers, with educators, to ensure that the jobs that created, a big majority of those go to local people. So the GDF would bring significant investment. We've heard about transport, flood defence and other important infrastructure, which we believe will benefit local people, education, industry, local business. And we're already working to shape these in partnership with the community and with your officials, to make sure they meet the needs of the, meet the needs of the county. And as we've talked about, a community, this is why we're here, a community can withdraw at any point before the test of public support, so nothing moves forward without that consent of the community. And we can choose, you can choose to do that next week, but we believe that if we do that, we will miss out on the opportunity to obtain some really significant benefits for the county. So we believe that this area has a real potential to host a GDF, and we hope and ask that you continue engaging with us on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Any questions? Councillor Dyer, can you please make sure to the actual speaker? Thank you.
Yes, no, thank you for that. Just, I note whilst we were making your report, that you're having to flick through a lot of pages, and I think given, given the size of the decision that the committee is scrutinising today, would it be possible, if you've got more to say, rather than three minutes worth, the chairman to allow that? Because I noticed you flicking through the pages, and I just thought I'd ask if you wanted to say more. I have some questions for you as well, but I don't think three minutes probably was enough time, given what you had on your paper there.
Well, no, thank you for that, yeah. It was, it's a short time for such a complex subject. I think a lot of the information is contained in the report, so I'd suggest, if you're happy, we go to questions and then take, use that opportunity to flesh out the details.
Okay. Chairman, I'm just going to repeat the questions, really, but in respect to the community partnership, you mentioned flooding, NWS. You mentioned flooding there, but it was very brief, and flood defences. What support would NWS be providing the community or the Environment Agency if it were to go ahead in respect to the flood defences?
So what would be, to develop the, to develop the GDF, we clearly need to put in place flood defences. The first step in that would be engaging a study by the Environment Agency. So that's, that's the early step, to look at the, what the requirements are for that area. So it would be, we'd be doing it because, because we would be developing a GDF, but it would be, it would be done early in the process, and everyone will get the benefit of what that study showed.
Chairman, if I may, I'm assuming you're in a position... Chairman, if I may, I'm assuming you're in a position to be able to say how much money specifically you'd be able to spend on both those studies, but also in actually putting in place those defences? Have you got a figure that you could detail to committee today?
So I think in terms of the, there's a number of elements to it. So in terms of the first part of your question, yeah, I think, I think the approximate spend would say about nine, nine million on those studies. They're quite intensive, it takes a lot of time to do them. In terms of what that actually, we wouldn't know the answer to the second part of your question until we'd been through those studies. As in how much it would actually cost.
Thank you councillor Dyer. councillor Dilks, would you like to put your question to Seth?
Yes, thank you, yeah. I certainly support my colleague councillor Dyer in, I was going to suggest that we did lift the standing orders to allow you to speak for longer, and of the speakers, because of the gravity of the decision about to be made. But my question, and I think we've sold it by, you know, with the question time, but the, I'm presuming that you believe that the site that, you know, that the site that's in question could be the best and safest repository for this hazardous waste in the country, yeah? And what I'm asking is, if you believe that, and if the council was minded to carry on with the process being part of it, how long would it be before we actually get an answer? Because I do take what colleagues say, that, you know, there is, we've already had four years, how long is it going to take? And we knew at the start of the process, it was going to take years before we got to a final. But when would we get that final answer and say, yes, we think, you know, you think this is the best and safest place for it? Thank you.
So in terms of how we're moving forward with the process, we're, our approach, as is laid out in the policy and as explained earlier, is to look at a number of locations. So we're still looking, for example, in West Cumbria, and we're looking at sites there. So it's not the case that we have decided this is the only place for it, and that's, and all kind of all our eggs are in this basket. We're taking forward a number of areas. In terms of this, in terms of this area, I think it was, again, going back to what was said, there's some good, I can't say right now, this is the, this is the best, this is the safest, but there's some really good indications when we talk about the geology. And we mainly get that from a lot of international precedent. At NWS, we work very closely with lots of European, and the Canadians as well, lots of European countries, because this is a complex area, and we need to get it right. So learning from each other is absolutely critical. And the geology we see around here is closest to actually what we see in France as well, as I think Andy said. So a lot of, you know, that's a good indication. So that's where we are right now. We haven't put our eggs in one basket, but we see a lot of good signs about this area from a geological point of view. In terms of the, in terms of the timing, I'm probably going to disappoint you a little bit with the answer. The, if you look at the Canadian example, they took their time on it, they took around 15 years in terms of engaging with communities all the way through. The reason for that is, we're making a choice here as a nation about a piece of infrastructure that's going to last for tens, hundreds of thousands of years. We need to take the time to get it right and not rush that. So there's a number of steps, it's very frustrating when you come into this and you kind of want to get on and make decisions, and I've certainly felt that coming into the job recently. But we do need to do, we do need to take it carefully, we need to do the science properly. The next step would be boreholes. If we were to continue, we would start to do a deeper level of characterisation, looking at kind of the, looking more detail at the geology. But we wouldn't really be doing that until the 2030s, so this is a long game. I think we probably say the back end of the 2030s is by the time we'd be, we'd be making the final choice.
Thank you, Seth, and thank you councillor Dilks. Any other questions? councillor Collier, would you like to put your question to Seth? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I just wonder if there are people in these areas, and you may are talking from Grimsby to Skegness, with the rail line going through as well, so involves a lot of people, are they really aware of how long this investigation is going to go on, the stress levels of the people? It just feels like you're putting money before people here.
So I think when we've done, I think we've done over 200 events in the, in the community to try and explain this, and we are always very clear about the timeline, the timeline's laid out, it's repeated in the papers. I think what's interesting is, and we've talked a little bit about the policy and how we've set the policy up, the policy does mean that we are, we're not developing this like a, in the way some infrastructure gets developed, which is, it kind of happens in a kind of behind closed doors, you get all your answers, you know where your access routes are, you know all the answers, and you come out and you put it on the table and everyone can engage straight away. The policy is designed to do this much more out in the open, so these things develop. So the good thing about that is that there is more transparency, people get the chance to challenge, and we've heard that from the community partnership. I suppose you could argue, one of the challenges with that is exactly what you're saying, that uncertainty is live and goes on for a while. But I suppose it's the trade-off between doing things transparently that makes it like that. I would, you know, I don't believe we are putting money ahead of people, because the whole way the policy is developed is very heavily geared towards being out in the open, but also giving people a test of public support. So the policy, more than anything, is really focused on that consent and a willing community. The downside of that, as you pointed out, is a long period of working it through.
Thank you, Seth. councillor Brooks, would you like to put your question to Seth Khybird? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Why wasn't it transparent from the start? It seems like things were hidden, like for the first year, and it was leaked. My other question is, you say transport, transforming the local economy, and I think I do agree with you, because I think it'll totally destroy tourism in Skegness, Borough, and all coastal areas, because nobody wants to holiday next to a nuclear waste site, let's be honest. Also, what is the worst case scenario if something happens with the site or the train that's coming? I'm assuming nobody, no residents or anything are allowed to use a train, it is just purely for the nuclear waste. Thank you.
Okay. In terms of transparency, the policy requires the local council to be, to be invited, to invite us in, sorry, us to invite to get together and start working together. If it's felt that there wasn't enough transparency right at the start, that's a shame, but I think that was covered by Andy in the way these things develop. Since then, we're absolutely trying to be transparent, which is, which is part of the challenge we have, I suppose. But we have, as I said before, you know, 200, 200 events to try and give that transparency. We have tried to give, to try to bring experts to talk to people, and not just experts who work for us, but experts who are independent. But I did listen to what, you know, what David said about, you know, has there been enough of that? And if we continue, we'll certainly learn from that. I think the, on the tourism, it's a fair challenge, we know, yeah, we know that, you know, that has been one of the concerns that's been raised with us. I think there's, I think if we just stay in, that's something we would, we would keep talking and working with. There are some interesting precedents here actually on the west coast. You have Sellafield, which is one of the biggest nuclear sites in Europe, right next, right next to the Lake District. And along, and you know, it almost surrounds it if you visit Sellafield. And they have managed to have in common, that hasn't damaged tourism in the same, you know, badly, you know, people still travel to the Lake District. So there are, there are definitely precedencies and learnings we could take from that. In terms of the worst case, as I think, again, as was said before, I think it's absolutely right, you can't sit and guarantee nothing will ever go wrong with anything. I think, I don't think that's what you're asking. Part of the reason it takes so long to do this is because it is so heavily regulated, regulated not by us, but by kind of the independent nuclear regulator, the ONR. And we're looking at precedents for what is done elsewhere, so internationally. And internationally, what's really interesting is, there's absolute consensus that the safest way to deal with this is through the, is through a deep geological repository, and that's uniform across, across Europe and North America. On the transport side, my previous job, I was actually involved in the transport, these sort of materials. All I can, again, you can't ever say nothing will ever go wrong, and if I tried to guarantee that, you wouldn't believe me. The, but having spent kind of about a decade working on that, both transporting by ship and by train, at the moment in this country, we move these materials round by train, often move through, you know, the centre of London, in very heavy, in very highly developed casks. And it's quite interesting, if you go on YouTube, there's a, there's a, quite an old video now, but one was done in the 80s, of showing how strong these casks are. And what happens is, they run a, they run a locomotive into a cask, and the cask, the locomotive crashes and the car stays, and it's there to demonstrate the levels of safety. But so it's very, what I'm saying is, it's very well-trod path in terms of particularly vitrified waste, which is the glass, the glass tubes that would be, that would be the case here, is how they're moved and how they're transported. Finally, I'm pretty sure that, as, you know, we talked about there, would it just be a nuclear, would it just be a nuclear rail train? I don't think, no, I don't think that's the case, because if we were building that level of infrastructure, we'd want a local community, a willing community, to benefit from that. So we'd see it as absolutely, absolutely something that should be benefiting a wider community and making it a nuclear-only one wouldn't. And as I said, currently, nuclear flasks go up and down the network as it is now.
Thank you. councillor Parkinson.
Hi, Seth. I have a question around the timescales actually involved if a GDF was to be built. So in the report, it does mention potentially hundreds of thousands of years. So I believe that's the case for some of the most dangerous radioactive waste, things like plutonium is typically 250,000 years. When you look at the timescales involved in uranium, you're looking at billions of years that this would be in the ground. That's an incredible commitment from everybody here to say, we want to commit to effectively the end of time, these products being in the ground in Lincolnshire. So would you be committed to ensuring the safety, there's no nuclear, I suppose spills, anything leaks into the local environment forever? You know, until the end of time, are you committed to ensuring the safety of those materials?
Yeah, it's a, it's a big commitment to the end of time, but it's the right question. So I'll come back to the international precedent, because that's what we've learnt from. And there was, there was a mention before of the Committee on Radioactive Waste Materials quorum, which was set up to ask this exact question, not as, not as the industry, or not as government, but an independent set of experts. And the view is, with the right geology and the right way of backfilling and sealing off permanently, absolutely, that is the best and safest way to deal, to deal with this. And you could almost argue that, over the same, at the minute, these materials, they exist now, right? They're being stored, they're being stored above ground at Sellafield, very safely, I might add, you know, there's a lot of focus around that. But actually, between the two, you know, keeping it at surface forever versus this permanent disposal, that is absolutely the best way forward, that's what the scientific evidence shows. And there's lots of work around things like, it's probably where your question's going, you know, what if, what if water gets in and gets into water tables? So all that's taken account of, and that's why in NWS, we have so many geologists whose whole specialism is how, is how water moves through rocks, and what the right type of rocks are.
Thank you, Seth. Any other questions? Sorry. councillor French.
About you providing jobs and training for local people, are the jobs and training going to be kind of low-level things where you're essentially providing like a forklift licence for somebody? Or is it going to be more long-term, high-level stuff where you're maybe getting people scholarships for degrees in nuclear physics or engineering?
A really good question. It would be both. If we're, if we're making, as a nation, if we're making a commitment to build a GDF, this is not something that kind of takes two years and you switch it off again. You need to build up, you need to build up the capabilities and skills. So there would be a whole mixture of jobs on this. There would be some, some, some highly technical jobs that require, you know, high levels of education, and we would certainly be working with local schools and local colleges on that sort of thing. But there'd also be some really important, kind of, as you say, forklift jobs, jobs in the supply chain, supporting it. I think all are really, I think that's what you're saying, all are really valid, but it wouldn't be a case of, if the concern is, would we import a load of specialist jobs only for them to leave a couple of years later? You physically can't do this with this scale of, this scale of construction. So we definitely would be investing in that.
Thank you, Seth. Any other questions? Right, okay. Thank you very much, Seth Khybird. Right, on to our third speaker. I'd like to invite Mike Crooks, chairman of the Guardians of the East Coast GO-TEC. Thank you very much.
Chair, members of the committee, thank you very much for the opportunity to come and address you. I'm here today to urge Lincolnshire County Council to withdraw from its ongoing involvement with Nuclear Waste Services regarding a proposal to bury nuclear waste beneath the Lincolnshire coast. For almost five years, this project has proceeded in the face of overwhelming and sustained local opposition. That opposition includes Dame Andrea Jenkins, Right Honourable Victoria Atkins, all county councillors in East Lindsay, all district councillors representing Mablethorpe and Featherthorpe, East Lindsay District Council, Mablethorpe and Sutton County Council, sorry, District Council, parish councils in Featherthorpe, Withan, Carlton, Gaetan, Reston, Tetney and Holton-Laclay. Community sentiment is not ambiguous. Multiple independent polls, both from GO-TEC and from parish level polls in Featherthorpe and Gaetan-Lamarche, have consistently shown that between 80 and 90% of local residents oppose this project and want it stopped immediately. Even NWS's own public engagement efforts reinforce this. Last year, they held a roadshow across eight venues, inviting residents via post, of the 300, sorry, of the 535 attendees, 93% participated in a confidential exit poll. The results of that were that 84 of them, 84% of them, said that they'd got enough information to make a formal decision on the process and an informed decision. 93% of those that voted wanted it to stop now. These findings align with every public survey except those conducted by NWS, written survey using a contractor Yonder. We questioned the credibility of those surveys with Yonder. The NWS survey is leading, biased and overly lengthy 40-minute process, designed to steer responses, in other words, a garden path survey. Many residents simply didn't want to engage under those conditions. We've repeatedly asked for transparency, basic raw data like refusal rates and have been ignored. Further, a previous door-to-door survey conducted by NWS yet was discredited. Responses were altered by NWS staff, calling into question the integrity of their data. This project is supposed to rely on the support of a willing horse community. After almost five years, the message is unequivocal, this is not a willing community. The consequences are being felt. Residents are suffering mental health issues now as we speak, due to the prolonged uncertainty, what on earth are they going to do with their lives, and what, how is this going to impact them in future? They've seen their house sales fall through, they've seen property values plummet. The local tourism industry is at risk. We highlighted in our first report, which copies within the report pack, what the potential impact would be on the tourism industry. That would far outweigh any benefits, potentially, of a railway line, yeah, potentially, or potentials for this, or potentials for that. It's all pie in the sky at this present moment in time. In summary, all indicators point to one conclusion. 85% of residents want this project stopped. We therefore ask this committee to recommend that Lincolnshire County Council Executive formally withdraw from this project. It is time to listen to the community and bring this damaging process to an end. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I now invite the members of the board to ask any follow-up questions. Have we got any questions? councillor Dyer.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and thank you, Mike, for the report. Just some questions following on from what you've just, you've just put to committee. You mentioned the polls, the community polls, and I remember speaking to Dan McNally about this a few months ago, about what had been carried out in some of the parishes there, so I'm aware of, that I'm aware that they've been carried out. But just similar to the question I asked earlier, in respect to those polls, do we know, and I appreciate it won't be able to say for every single one, but who was voting in them? Was it one vote per household? Was it adults in households? Was it, was it younger people, teenagers? I'm not asking that as a trick question, I just want to understand in respect to community involvement in those polls, do we know who it is? Now, again, I think I understand that it might be different for each poll. Just furthermore, just two more questions on, if I may. And again, going back to some of the points I've asked other speakers, it's flooding and the potential, the benefits that may come if this all moves ahead in respect to flood defences, just what's the community view on that? Could you provide more detail? And finally, and it's just, just something that you mentioned towards the end of your statement there, you urged the council executive next week to formally withdraw. So are you... So are you indicating that you don't want a poll, you just want the county council to withdraw? If you could just please provide more detail on that, that'd be appreciated. Thank you.
Okay. So in response, yep. In terms of who in the polls, I'm certainly aware that the Theddlethorpe poll went to every household and it was a prepaid envelope that was provided to actually receive the responses back. Yep, so that would have been for the household. Yep. In terms of Gaetan Le Marsh, we understand that that was actually to individuals within the household. So that was a slightly different scenario. But each of those represented a significant figure of not wanting to have the process on their doorstep. In terms of flooding, local sentiment, you know, this is an area that has in 1953, I believe, had a significant amount of flooding on the coastal region. Certain things were put in place then and, you know, we would never say never from that point of view, but this is jam tomorrow. You know, in the X number of years, the potential that this could carry on for, when in that process will this flooding barrier or whatever it is come into play? And is it going to come into play? You know, are people in future actually going to actually see that that comes into play? So that I believe to be a good answer to the community view on flooding. In terms of the no poll, for four and a half years, certainly as an organisation, we decided to ask the people themselves. So these polls have taken over from a four and a half year period. So when you say about going to the test of public support, who? Who is going to be questioned? How is it going to operate? These are actually questions that we've asked previously and no answers have been forthcoming. So that's why we decided to poll people ourselves and actually to ask people what their thoughts were and then present the findings in the two of our reports that we've got. Therefore, I think the poll has gone. This is now time to put it to bed.
Thank you Mike. Any other questions? Councillor Brooks.
Thank you Chair. Just on Sellafield, I've been led to believe there was a leak there recently, which is slowing down. So that's why I'm concerned about the worst case scenario. Thank you all for your presentations. Over the previous month, I've been knocking on hundreds of doors and I asked the same question regarding the site and it was overwhelmingly no. I was only told yes by one person, but I asked them all the same question. I feel the risk is too great to the tourism and the residents. I believe we should withdraw from this process, to be honest. It's not being transposed from the front. And that's where I stand. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Brooks. Any further questions? Right. I'd like to invite councillor Bailey Robinson, who represents Saltfleet and the Coats, to address the board for up to three minutes. Thank you Bailey.
I was recently elected as the county councillor for the division in which the nuclear waste facility was moved to in January, being a site between Great Carlton and Gaetan Le Marsh. I stood on a main priority in my campaign, no to the Lincolnshire nuclear waste dump. And this was the first official vote for residents to voice their concerns for the nuclear waste facility. On May the first, Saltfleet and the Coats voted for myself with 1,453 votes, being 47% of the vote, a majority of 631. However, combining all candidates standing on a firm anti-G D F platform, which includes the independent candidate also, this majority rises to 1,115 votes over candidates who stood neutrally. The Conservatives were even politically motivated to change their stance a month before the vote, increasing that majority even more. Give or take, that's a pretty clear indication of public opinion. On the doorstep, this was the number one concern. From Gaetan Le Marsh to South Reston to Grummelby and Mamby, people were urging whoever had the power to stop it in its tracks. The amount of long term stress and anxiety this has put on residents in my division is appalling and the fact that many were still unaware after four years of what a G D F was just shows the lack of communication from the N W S. The N W S admit themselves that from their own research, only 27% of residents feel that they have enough information to decide on a G D F. They have had four years to ease the concerns of local residents, educate and support the local community to understand what this means for the local area. They have failed. Information regarding a potential site should have been provided to the communities affected, debated and voted on many years ago. So the community were an integral part of the process and would have had the support of the public to move forward. Due to the failings of the N W S and the previous administration, that is no longer on the table. This new council has the opportunity to reshape our local economy and create incentives for businesses to invest in our local area without selling out our rural communities for nuclear waste under their feet. We can do better than this. Lincolnshire deserves better. Thank you.
Thank you Bailey. I would like to invite members of the board to ask any follow up questions to Bailey. Anybody got any questions? Right. I'd like to invite the members of the board to make any relevant statements. Any direct, any further questions to the officers? There we go. Councillor Davis.
Thank you. Just for clarification, are we in the general debate now? Thank you. Just to get a little bit of housekeeping out of the way, there has been some allegations, I've heard informally about whipping on this, on issues, and I can confirm that I don't tell councillor Dyer how to dress despite what looks may otherwise allude to. Thank you very much to everybody who's come along this morning and thank you to colleagues across the floor for your discussions and your passionate words at the back. It's really difficult when discussing anything like this because I think it's important to remember where we are and who we are. We are not the government. We aren't designated decision makers on how the government disposes of its nuclear waste. And I talked to somebody, you know, somebody who used to be in the navy and had spent time very close to some of these hot things, subsequent I've worked at places like Aldermars and so on. I'm not anti the technology, I'm not anti nuclear, perhaps I suggest, nobody in this room is. But let's come back to those core questions that Andy Gutherson asked at the beginning. Are the community suitably informed? The absolute answer is no. We've heard that from the community partnership, we've heard it from the gentleman from N W S, we've heard it from the gentleman from GO-TEC, we've heard it from a variety of members who represent these people directly. We've had five years and we still aren't informing people. We're still in this realm of probably, possibly, it may happen. You know, forgive me Andy Gutherson, but my experience of the planning system is that probably means possibly and possibly means no. The reality is in all of these situations, when we get to the end of the process, all of the fine words, the nice brochures, the nice, everything's always sun shining in these brochures, aren't they? All of that will disappear and it will be the local residents who will be left picking up the pieces with so many broken promises. And that's just not acceptable. The other question, next question was, is there a level of opposition? Well, it almost goes without saying, the fact that we're having this discussion and we've heard so firm numbers from GO-TEC and even from N W S, I think would be the first to agree, that there is no real public support for this. Question two answered. So then the third and final question sits with us. Is there scope for further work? And that's exactly the question that was posited in the opening question. And I'm afraid for me, that was answered during that last part of your discussion Seth. Oh well, we may be on site back end of 2030, 2040. It is simply unacceptable for us to sit here, not as government decision makers for how the nuclear industry works. We don't define that. What we define is what is our engagement with the local community as local councillors? It is unacceptable for us to sit here and subject our communities to a decade and a half of further uncertainty. That is unacceptable. To coin a phrase, you've had your chance. The chance has been given to get the homework done right. And I'm afraid if the scales reversed and we were putting in an application and the line had been crossed as when you're, you know, you've got to have got all your paperwork in by this certain date, there would have come a point where a planning authority would say, no, I'm sorry, you've missed your cut off. I think we're at that stage colleagues and I would like to formally propose from the floor that we ask the executive to immediately withdraw from this process and cite a clear message to our communities that it's a no from Lincolnshire County Council. And I ask for a second.
Second that. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Davis. Have we got anybody else? Sorry councillor Corry.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to speak on that if that's okay chairman. So to be clear, our role in this has always been to be analytical and neutral, not supportive. And ultimately, this is always going to be a community decision, not a county council decision. But chairman, it must also be understood in this context, as a local authority, we must always be mindful, as we heard from Seth, that infrastructure and service delivery decisions are made for the benefit of our communities. We do things with and for our communities, not to them. And referencing the considerations set out in the paper before us today, it was right at the time to engage with the process to allow our communities the time to understand what was being proposed and what the impact on their environment present and future would be. But since this process has started, our communities have made their feelings clear and the proposal has changed significantly from that which was initially presented. And we've heard from Mr Gutherson and Mr Crooks that there has been vociferous local opposition. So therefore I am happy to second this proposition to withdraw completely from this process. Thank you chairman.
Thank you councillor Corry. Councillor Dilks.
Thank you. I've got to say, I've always had an open mind on this whole question from 2021 when it was first announced. I've been neutral on it, as the paperwork sort of says, and clearly nobody wants hazardous radioactive waste, the worst possible kind in their backyard. So, you know, the criteria of requiring a willing community is always going to be a real challenge, you know, good luck with that. And, you know, as you say, we've been looking since, I think somebody said, Andy said, the nation's been looking for a place since 2008 and I'm sure we're going to be looking for another 20 years at least. I mean, there is a bit of a dilemma here, isn't there? You know, nobody wants the waste in their backyard, but I think all major parties of government and those seeking government would accept that nuclear is part of our future. Nuclear power has to be part of our future, but it brings with it this waste and it has to be dealt with. And I've always had the view that whilst I've never sort of supported the proposal, I've always felt that if it can be shown that this is the best and safest place to put this stuff, then we have a responsibility to listen to those arguments and sort of move forward on that base. I do sense, as I think Lindsay said, councillor Corry said, the proposals changed somewhat from Theddlethorpe. And I think Theddlethorpe was perhaps more acceptable than what we've now got, you know, a greenfield site which seems to be a few miles away. Theddlethorpe obviously being, you know, it was built for bringing gas in from the North Sea, so it's kind of almost related to that. But it seems to me, what I've heard this morning is, and I didn't hear a response, there wasn't an opportunity for Seth to come back, on whether it's likely that you can meet the criteria of having a willing community. And it just seems to me that that is highly unlikely at this stage, given all what we've heard this morning. So I think on that basis, I support the motion that has been put to the board this morning. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dilks. Any other questions? Anybody else to speak?
Yeah, I'll go.
Okay councillor Parkinson.
Thank you. I want to come back to my point that I made earlier to Seth. When I've been sat there at night reading this proposal, looking at the information, it is incredibly scary around the time scales that we're going to be looking at here. Humanity in itself has existed for around 300,000 years. Plutonium 239, which will be part of the storage, the most dangerous waste that will be included in this facility, will be safe in around 240,000 years' time. Now plutonium 239 is incredibly dangerous. It's a gamma emitter of radiation, the most dangerous form of radiation that can be. With this facility, we have to acknowledge that we are putting something incredibly, incredibly dangerous that physically kills people, causes deformities in people, destroys the natural environment, a small level below our surface. And we're making that commitment for a minimum of nearly a quarter of a million years. That's not just our generation or the next generation or the generation after that. We're making a commitment to thousands of generations that follow on from us on the decisions that we make here today. So I think it's really clear that this board and this council understands the gravity of the decision that we're making here today. We are making a commitment for many, many, many centuries that follow on before us. And I think we need to be really clear on the understanding of the implications this could have. If in 200,000 years' time, things change, there is an accident, they're going to be the ones that are going to have to clean this up. Huge efforts to ensure that people aren't going to get hurt, there's all the things like radiation. We need to understand that this is a massive decision for us and I just want the board and all the members to be clear on the facts behind that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Parkinson. Can I ask Andy Gutherson a question? Councillor Dyer.
Thank you very much chairman. I'd just like to, I've already said my question in respect to how the ballot would be carried out, my questions around how that would be, that process would be completed. I'm just wondering, Andy, if you can come back to those questions that I asked earlier in respect to how do you believe that that ballot would be carried out, that test of public support? But if you could, once I've finished speaking, come back on that, I would appreciate that chairman. But for nearly four years, this council, we've been engaging in this process surrounding the G D F. At N W S, you've had ample time to present the case to all stakeholders and to move this scheme forward. And whilst this proposal, as you rightly said today, is undeniably complex, the glacial pace that this has moved forward and has progressed has been deeply frustrating for residents within the search area, but also for the surrounding communities as well. And having followed this for almost four years, I recognise that there are both pros and cons citing a G D F in Lincolnshire and that they've been discussed today. So we must be crystal clear about this. There are potential benefits and that's such as the improved flood risk mitigation and supporting the Environment Agency's responsibilities and also the enhanced transport links as well, and the creation of many well paid jobs for local people. However chairman, we all must understand that that price for these benefits is the sighting of a G D F in our county and that's something that we should keep at the front of our minds. And as far as I'm concerned chairman, we've just witnessed a clear test of public support. You know, my party not in control of the council anymore and we can fit in a minibus.
A big minibus.
A big biddy bus, yeah, not a small sized one, a big one, at least 14 seats. But the new leader of the council made a firm commitment during the election campaign, I'm pleased he's here today, and I quote a comment that you made on social media. If reform controls the council after the election, we will cancel the N W S agreement, day one, no confusion and absolute. So despite the efforts of many dedicated Conservative councillors, reform now controls this council. And with the control comes the responsibility and the power to honour the promises that you made to the electorate in the election. So chairman, we cannot afford dithering or delay. We heard it last week, this new administration wants to cut costs, wants to move things forwards, wants to cut out bureaucracy. Well, I think councillor Davis's amendment to the proposal here today is absolutely right and you're absolutely right councillor Davis to propose that amendment. The original report recommendation only prolongs the uncertainty, it wastes more public money and it continues a process that the people have already clearly rejected. The people have spoken and the promises have been made, so now it is time for this council to act. The council has a clear and simple choice before it today, honour the democratic will of the people or betray it. Reform UK councillors were elected on a pledge, not a possibility, not a base... Reform UK councillors were elected on a pledge, not a possibility, not a maybe, but a promise. So I say this chairman, and I'll be very clear in that. Keep your word, end the uncertainty and show the people of Lincolnshire that their voices still matter. Vote for this amendment and let today be the day we finally draw a line under this flawed and unwanted process. Thank you.
Andy, could you answer that? Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Dyer. In the context of the formal test of public support, that is left open for the community partnership to advise in terms of the exact mechanism that would be used. The report deliberately didn't go into the options because there could have been a dozen or different ways of that could have been potentially taken forward. In terms of the recommendation, it was balanced and tied into the question that I posed at the beginning of is there a need for any further test of public sentiment? Or in the context of what you have all been party to this morning in terms of the information that's available, you have enough information to understand what public sentiment is. And given the comments that have been made this morning, I think it's fairly obvious where you all sort of sit and feel on that. In terms of the way the original recommendation was framed, there was delegated authority being requested for further detail to be worked through. The options about how that might have been worked through would have, in my view, been part and parcel of that delegation. So we deliberately didn't get into the detail for day. I think it would have been a distraction to actually start talking about the mechanism and the way the debate's gone probably indicates that probably wouldn't have been good use of everyone's time.
Thank you Andy. Any more speakers? Councillor Brooks.
Thank you chair. I just want to clarify on the motion. It says that we want to withdraw straight away. Doesn't it have to go to the exec board to make the decision next week? So we can only recommend to withdraw, is that right?
Yes, it's a proposal for the executive. Any other speakers? Okay, the proposal that the executive immediately withdraw from this process, sending a clear message to our communities. Those in favour? Those against? That's carried. Thank you very much. I think that was unanimous. Right. What are we doing for time? Thank you very much Andy. Right. Does anybody, shall we take a break? Five minute break? Yeah, take a five minute break. And we'll return for the next section. Thank you. Okay, now on to the next section. The Strategic Technology Partner Contract Award. The next pre-decision scrutiny report can be found on pages 47 to 74 of the agenda pack. This report seeks the executive approval of the appointment of a new strategic technology partner, STP, following a competitive procurement process to deliver a full management IT service, enhanced cybersecurity and modern digital capabilities. It also seeks to endorse a new IT structure and operating model that will optimise processes, consolidate systems, improve digital user experience and drive significant efficiencies across the council. The executive are due to consider the report for a decision on the 3rd of June. Our actions in terms of input requested from the board are that members of the overview and scrutiny management board consider the report and determine whether members support the recommendation to the executive as set out on page 50 and agree the board's comments to be passed on to the executive in relation to this item. This report will be presented by Tom Baker, Chief Information Officer. Ben Crowe, Head of Commercial Infrastructure is also in attendance. I wish to remind members that appendix A to this report contains exempt information under paragraph three of part one of schedule 12A of the Local Government Act 1972. Should you wish to ask questions specifically relating to this appendix, please indicate and we will move to a closed debate. Now over to you Tom.
Thank you chair. My name's Tom Baker, I'm Chief Information Officer for LCC. I've been in post now for around 12 months and over that 12 month period, this has been my primary occupation, focus. This contract is of huge importance to the council. Technology, laptops, systems, services are used every single day by every member or every officer of this organisation. It's integral to support our services, whether that's adult social care, whether that's child protection, trading standards and the list goes on. We support somewhere in the region of 6,000 members of staff, we support over 500 line of business systems, we support staff operating out of 200 different sites. We operate an infrastructure that composes many hundreds of servers, network switches, wireless access points. In summary, a complex and critical piece of infrastructure that is the very foundation of service delivery. So the report here details the process that we've been through to get to a preferred bidder for our strategic technology partnership contract. And the report and the paper here outlines a series of recommendations with respect to delegation of responsibility to chief, deputy chief officers and executive directors. It asks for endorsement of the approach that we've set out. And it asks for an endorsement of an outline target operating model within the council's retained IT function to segue and to work with the new provider coming through. The report's considered a couple of other options other than progressing down an outsourcing route. These include insourcing, which is not recommended due to a lack of skills, maturity of capability within Lincolnshire, unfortunately for some of these capabilities and our ability to deliver services as required. Insourcing's also been discounted due to a lack of economy of scale, but also then an increased pressure to manage supply chains. Further options have been considered, which include the amendment of the existing agreement. This is absolutely not recommended. We are at the end of the current relationship that exists with Serco. We've exercised all extensions to that contract. We are now operating within a transitional services arrangement, which is due to come to an end in March of next year. In terms of background, council outsourced its IT service provision alongside a number of other transactional services over 20 years ago now, initially to an organisation called Michelle and subsequently through a retendering exercise to Serco in 2015, a decade ago. In advance of the contract ending with Serco in 2024, the council previously embarked on an insourcing and multi-sourcing strategy. This was aborted in late 2022, primarily, as I've described, down to a lack of local technical expertise. The current contract with Serco covers a number of key services. These include, but are not limited to, end user support. So this is a provision of laptops, desktops, tablets, smartphones. This also covers off access to key line of business systems. Everything from Microsoft Office through to systems that support our different service areas. It also covers off some of the services that you may have used yourselves. The tech bar that we've got in this building that allows people to walk up and receive support with respect to their device or issues that they might have. It covers off things like the service desk. If I've got a problem with your IT equipment or you want a new application, you might contact the service desk. Hugely important from the size and scale of this organisation, it receives many, many calls, thousands over the course of a year and is an integral part in making sure that the council continues to operate effectively. IT support services cover off areas such as the wifi network, network connectivity, email provision, secure storage of files and documents and monitoring and maintaining the IT infrastructure. We also receive some projects and technical delivery to support us with new system implementation, design and coordination of programmes. All of these services are critical and will continue to be provided via the new agreements. The current IT service though is reflective of a basic infrastructure focused service. It's reflective of the contract which was signed over 10 years ago. It lacks the sort of transformative capabilities that we're now seeing becoming prevalent within many areas, government, local government and the private sector. Access to skills around automation technologies to support us delivering streamlined and effective services. It lacks access to technologies such as AI and the skills to support those capabilities. Moving forwards and developing the case for change, the new leadership team came in as a result of the failed insourcing strategy in 2024. Myself and the management team have been here for almost, well, over a year now. Fundamentally, we've looked to stabilise the service that we've got at this point in time and we've also looked to pick up some issues that were prevalent when coming into the organisation. Over the last 12 months, we've enacted a significant remedial programme to address issues around resilience and cybersecurity. The fact that these issues existed, I think, is reflective of the sort of contract that we've had in place and the management of that contract previously. So as I was saying, the last 10 years have been a period of significant change. Digital transformation has come to the fore, technologies like cloud computing are now commonplace. Automation and AI are being used by organisations to drive efficiencies, improve services and reduce costs. Cybersecurity continues to be a critical issue. Seldom a day goes by without turning on the news to hear about another organisation that has been hacked in some way, shape or form. This is a huge and critical issue to local government, government more widely and to Lincolnshire County Council. And we must move with the times and we must build out the capabilities that will protect the council and also the people of Lincolnshire. Technologies have also radically developed with respect to the management of devices. Capabilities are now far more proactive than they've been previously. Issues can be detected before they manifest themselves and impact users and we must again move with the times. Collaboration and the use of capabilities has come on leaps and bounds. We all use teams in our day-to-day roles. The ability to share and to collaborate on documents drives and facilitates innovation across organisations. The role of information and data is becoming more and more pronounced. We must understand the services that we provide. We must have the information at our fingertips to facilitate us in the context of understanding demand and responding to it. Therefore, putting in place the right data capabilities is hugely important. And all of these areas, all of these new areas of development are covered off by the new contract. Alongside putting in place the contracts and the tendering exercise, we're also looking to restructure the IT team. We want to build out a capability within the council that is reflective of the sort of skills that we need to manage the suppliers that we've got. We can't outsource our responsibility, especially around areas such as cybersecurity. And we'll build out the skills and are building out the skills within the team to support that oversight, that assurance, that ownership of technical strategy, cybersecurity. We'll have a key focus on service management, making sure that we hold our new partner to account and that we work with them to continually improve services for the benefit of end users and that that is done in a way that reflects greatest possible value to the organisation. We also want to work with a partner that is important to us, but we're also important to them. We want to build a strategic relationship around improving public services jointly together and to have that as a core focus of what we do from both the IT together and to have that as a core focus of what we do from both the IT team's perspective and in partnership. We also want to move to a new model of delivery. We will work with the new partner organisation to build out efficient and safe core IT services in the way that I've described, but we'll also access capabilities that will focus on some of these new and emerging capabilities to support the council becoming more effective. And we'll do that using modern agile methodologies. We'll focus on key products such as AI and automation, and we will build out a process that's based on business value to ensure that we are providing and creating an opportunity whereby we can materially improve services, speed of delivery, cost of delivery, but also ensuring that they are progressively more transparent. So in terms of the procurement, in April twenty twenty four, council executive approved a new IT service delivery model, and we started to look to to move on that whole process. Contractually, objectives were to improve the IT experience staff, to establish a strategic partnership and to increase increase the council's security posture. The procurement plan was then initiated via a competitive procedure negotiation, CPM, and this was used for a number of reasons. The complexity of the service, as I've described, lends itself to that sort of procedure. Also, managing and dealing with the legacy contract that we've got. It provided multiple delivery options and prevented or incentivised the opportunity for innovation to come back from the market. It supported us with complex commercial considerations, and it also facilitated limited but constructive dialogue through that process with vendors. The contract term was defined at this point of a seven year contract with a two plus two year extension facility. We think that this contract offers the right balance between a long term partnership whilst retaining flexibility. The contract also contains a number of mechanisms to incentivise the new partner to provide an innovative service, one that's continually improving. There's also a number of mechanisms available to us around termination at our convenience. There's also a very strong set of mechanisms with respect to key performance indicators, so we can absolutely manage the supplier going further forwards even within that contract term. The contract itself has a number of key strategic principles. The first one is provision of an evergreen estate. We want to get to a point where all of the infrastructure that we've got is maintained, that it's managed from a security perspective, that it's patched, and that it is safe and secure. And there is, within the contract, the focus and the controls in place to facilitate that. We wanted to think about digital transformation, effective exploitation of new IT capabilities, and we think that we have achieved that. Also, within the contract, there is a significant focus on social value, and there are a number of initiatives described within that to support both staff and Lincolnshire residents with skills and digital capabilities. From a resourcing standpoint, two P regulations will clearly apply with respect to the existing supplier, and we feel that there is a well trodden path that has been articulated extremely clearly by the incoming partner with respect to that process. We also have noted through this process, the preferred bidder is growing rapidly, and that a large portion of their workforce comes from a two P perspective. So in summary and in conclusion, the outsource of the IT service provider to the new incoming partner is absolutely critical. It is essential to safeguard the services that we all rely on every day. We think it will deliver a highly effective, evergreen core technology estate that will enable innovation as well as day to day services. The IT restructure alongside the adoption of modern agile product team capabilities, we feel will be at the forefront in enabling efficiencies across the organisation and new ways of doing things. The new contract represents a material opportunity, both to drive savings from the current Serco cost base and to leverage capabilities that will allow us to become more efficient across the organisation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Tom. I would like to invite members of the board to make any relevant statements and ask any questions. councillor Dyer.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I believe I subbed on OSMB when you last came to the committee, or at least when when you were going out, just to commence this process. And I think it cannot be underestimated just how important this is to both this council and the and the residents that we serve across Lincolnshire. Because if this goes wrong, one, it's an awful PR case for the council, but actually this is this is essential life or death services that we provide. So making sure that we get this right and it's suitable way into the future is absolutely essential. And I can see from what you've managed, Tom, from when you came on board of the organisation to where you are today, you've put in, you and your team have put an immense amount of work into this, and I think it's commendable, and hopefully the committee approves your recommendation today. My one question from the report, Chairman, if I may, and I'm asking, it's Tom's report, but hopefully the executive members may be able to answer if you're unable to. There is, within the report, an element of capital costs and capital funding, and you mentioned that within your report, the having an evergreen system, et cetera. There's a capital cost, I believe, of approximately ten point six million, but I appreciate within the report, there are some savings that have been made in there. My question to you is, this capital cost to set this system up, will this be funded through prudential borrowing, or will it be or will it be met internally through the council's own reserves? Because my question would be, how does that stack up with Reform UK's manifesto pledge not to borrow funding to fund council services? So we've had ninety million pounds for the North High Come Relief Road already confirmed, and now there's a capital cost to the council of between ten to fifteen million pounds. So I just wonder what the administration's view is on that policy. Thank you.
Andy Cook.
Yeah, I'll take I'll take the first the first part of it, Chair, if that's okay. So we have strayed into the the exempt bit of the appendix, but I think it's it's an allowable answer. We're not talking, I don't think there's anything specific around sensitivities. I think we've set out in the report that there's, we're just about to go through the year end financial process for the council in the coming months or so. And one of the one of the steps that we'd seek to go through with the new executive is making some recommendations around using available funding. Oftentimes, with IT capital expenditure, we avoid borrowing to pay for that, given the short lives of the assets. So we would always typically seek to identify whether we could apply capital receipts to that or revenue funding to do so. So I would never be recommending the executive to borrow to pay for IT essentially.
Thank you. councillor Davis.
I, oh, sorry.
You are fifty this council term.
You lot don't want him, do you? No, no, I don't think so. No, thank you. In all seriousness, thank you for the work you've done. I know since as a previous, my previous role as portfolio editor at IMT, the work Tom and his team have done is brilliant, and I think this report is testament to that. There is by no small measure a huge amount of work that's gone, and I think Tom's calm exterior belies how much effort and, dare I say, stress at times has gone through. So it's a testament to you and the team. Thank you, Tom. I do have a question on page sixty six, which I think may fall as into exempt, that I would like to get into a little bit of the detail on, but I don't know whether you, Chairman, wish to handle any non exempt questions first and then just pick that up.
If we could do non exempt first, and then we'll we'll go to close.
Happy to, yeah.
Are there any other other non exempt questions? councillor French.
And when we're talking about these cyber security threats, is there anything that you're aware of, or what what kind of stuff are we looking at here that could happen or is happening potentially?
We've only got a few minutes, I guess, but, I mean, it's everything from nation state activities to to hacktivists in their bedroom and everything in between. It's denial of service attacks and relatively unsophisticated activities all the way to spear phishing. And I think you've seen probably some of the stuff in the press and, you know, sort of sitting down and looking at how identity has been compromised via certain criminal groups. You know, there's there's an awful lot that we need to be concerned about and and we need to be vigilant about. And cybersecurity is something that we've invested heavily in over the last the last twelve months. And maybe maybe we can we can expand on this question as we move into into the next section because there's there's things that that, you know, it might be better just to have a sort of conversation about that that maybe maybe is safeguarded from an information perspective.
Thank you, Tom. Any other questions? Question, councillor Parkinson.
Thank you. I know that obviously there's been a move to outsourcing a lot of these services now, and I completely understand the need for more brains and abilities to be able to outsource it. I also wouldn't feel that I'm doing the right thing to my constituents without asking. Is there anything further that we can do to help the people of Lincolnshire in terms of providing jobs or certain roles to them to have as much locally as we can, given our responsibilities to our constituents?
Yeah, thank you for the question, and it's something that that I'm quite passionate about. I think digital skills are integral, whether you work in IT or whether you don't, actually. I think some of the things that we're seeing with AI, how that's going to impact society, how that's going to impact the world of work, I think it's so important that people have got a grasp of these capabilities and they can use them to facilitate their own careers. I appreciate that this this stuff isn't for everybody, but there is a big opportunity, I think, to sort of grow grow skills. Through the partnership that we're proposing, they're talking about supporting communities to drive more of a digital inclusion approach, and there's some more detail that we can probably go into in the in the next section around that. In terms of what I think we should be doing from a service perspective, mid last year, sort of a couple of months after joining the organisation, I recommended that we we join the British Computing Society. So it's the UK effectively professional body for the IT industry. So that now means every member of the council IT team is MBCS, they're a member of the British Computing Society. What it also means that they've got access to training material, courses, online content at a really, really sort of very, very affordable rate. I think it costs us somewhere in the region of eight thousand pounds a year for our membership. So I think that's a that's a huge thing, and we're looking intently at development plans. What we'd also like to do as we move through the restructure is to look at closer working relationships with the university, but also to think about making sure that we're growing our own. And when we get to that seven year period or when we when we get further into this, you know, constantly we need to review the situation in the context of how we we deliver those services. Something I think that is really important as we as we move forward through this relationship is is the sort of skills and offer that we've got for people working, not in the IT function, but more broadly across the organisation. So what we want to do is leverage new capabilities, and they're within the contract. So I'll give you a sort of flavour of what that means, right? So historically, you might have had to go and replace your laptop if it failed. What we're proposing through this new partnership is that it almost will have a sort of zero touch model, that laptops will be built when connected to a network. And instead of going somewhere to a tech bar, we'll have locker facilities. You'll get a QR code, you'll go to the locker, you'll open the locker, and you'll pick up your laptop. Now, if you're a social worker, working out of hours, et cetera, that's a huge benefit. So we want to use some of those technologies to provide a better, more streamlined core service. What we want to do through this relationship is to think about the sort of tools that are going to facilitate a more effective way of doing things. And even basic things like something called Microsoft Copilot, it's AI, but it helps productivity. We've used that to support teams of practitioners, reduce caseloads, in some instances down from forty to zero. So what we want to do is to really support the organisation in taking those next steps. We know that we need to do probably more with the same or more with less in some instances, and leveraging these sorts of capabilities will mean that we're more effective, and that means training for everybody. So multi multi pronged approach, but very different sort of contract and relationship and service to the one that we've got now.
Thank you, Tom. Any other questions? Not restricted. I have one, Tom, if I may. What safeguards are in place to prevent the council becoming overly dependent on a single provider? And how will we make sure the contract continues to offer good value over time?
Yeah, so a couple of couple of questions there. If I give you an example, I think it's a it's a really important one, and it goes back to the cyber security piece. We are stipulating within the contract adherence to certain standards, and those standards are endorsed by UK government agencies, and they are tailored for use by local government, something called a cyber assurance framework. And we get accredited against that framework, and we've been through a process with our colleagues in fire and rescue to achieve effectively certification, if you like. We've also been part of the early adopter programme, because that's going to be rolled out more widely. So that was something that we did last year, and we're working towards full accreditation in November time. That's one element of what we'll do. We'll also take a risk based view around cyber security, and that means, again, more standards, more frameworks. So we'll have in place something called NIST. NIST has a hundred and six controls within it. It's very prescriptive, it's probably the most prescriptive framework out there that says you should be doing this in terms of patching devices. You should have these controls and processes in place when you're managing identity and access to things. So we're putting that in place as well. Now, on top of that, from a cyber security perspective, we've implemented a new cyber security operations centre, Security Operations Centre, a SOC. Now, that is a third party. So we will work with the new supplier to maintain those standards, but we also have a third party organisation operating on our behalf twenty four by seven that's effectively scanning our network and looking for bad actors, as they say in the industry, to make sure that that nothing untoward is happening. So we think that we've got a really good mix, and we're building out a sort of multi layer assurance mechanism to allow us to have multiple eyes on, to benefit from organisations that have got their own ideas and to bring that all together for the for the benefit of Lincolnshire and to make sure that we are safeguarded and protected. I can go on if you want, but I mean, there's there's other things.
Thank you, Tom. Any other? councillor Brooks.
Thank you, Chair. It's just a quick one, Tom. Thank you so much for the report. I love it, I love AI, all fantastic for me. Just a question, I was going to ask about Plan B, but I see you've just said we've got a third party. Is that price going to include the third party, or is that an extra cost it's going to be? And say if something happens to the main provider, a cyber attack or it goes bust or something like that, have we got a Plan B? Thank you.
So I guess there's always always that that possibility that organisations may have financial difficulties. As part of this process, and working alongside my colleague here, Ben, and colleagues in the finance function, we review the financial position of organisations and indeed through this process, organisations have fallen by the wayside because they didn't, they didn't hit the criteria to allow us to to be confident in 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 their provision. We feel we've got an organisation with a with with a good financial standing. I think, to your point, is there a Plan B? It's interesting, the world of technology, I guess. Part of what we're doing as part of this process is looking at a sort of zero trust type model. Increasingly, our line of business systems are hosted in the cloud, and they're not hosted by the partner that we've got here, they're hosted by the provider of those systems. So the people that write the software, in essence. So we operate and we use hundreds of systems, but in essence, they aren't in council data centres, they're in data centres within the cloud. So there is an opportunity there to to respond to failures, to issues because of that architecture and because of the way that we're set up. Increasingly, we want less infrastructure here within the council. It's a single point of, it's not a single point of failure because of the work that we've done, but we don't want servers running in council premises. We want them in purpose built data centres, they're resilient, we want the data replicated across the piece. Our wide area network contract will be separate to this one, so there's a degree of separation as part of that. And the contract also contains a number of mechanisms by which we could take on the management and management of both staff and infrastructure, should the worst happen. So there's a number of termination clauses and capabilities that sit within it. And again, working with that organisation, the novation of contracts, you do that anyway as part of, you know, sort of wrapping one contract up and moving to another. So it will be difficult, councillor Brooks, don't get me wrong, but there is a mechanism or mechanisms in place to facilitate a response should the worst happen, which we don't think it will because of the checks that we've done through this process.
Thank you, Tom. Any other questions? Right, okay. Thanks for your comments and questions. This now concludes the public session for this item. As we need to move to a closed debate, I will read this in accordance to the section 100A for the Local Government Act 1972. The following agenda item has been circulated to the press and public on the grounds that it is considered to obtain exempt information as defined in paragraph three of part one of schedule 12A of the Local Government Act 1972 as amended. The press and the public may be excluded from this meeting for the consideration of this item of business. I move that we proceed with the consideration of item 12 in a private session. Do I have a second there? councillor Davis. We will now vote. Those in favour? Those against? Therefore, it's carried. Any abstentions? We'll now take a short minute, five-minute break to switch into a private session. Once we are offline, we will continue. Thank you to the members of public and press who are still with us. Upon consideration of the information in the report, assurances given by officers in both the public and private sessions, I have a suggested proposal. I move that the board supports their recommendation to the executive as detailed on page 50 of the report and I ask that our comments, as these have been captured by the scrutiny officer, be shared with the executive for their consideration on the 3rd of June. Do I have a second there? councillor Brooks. Those in favour? Those against? Any abstentions? Thank you. That is agreed. Okay, lastly, scrutiny report work programme.
Thank you, Chairman. Conscious of time, so this is really for information only. It's fair to say that the work programme of this committee is a work in progress and any amendments will be reported to the board in due course. Any member of the board has an opportunity to suggest items for the work programme and that can be taken into account when we amend it as and when. And that's it, Chairman. I'm happy to answer any questions, but tis really for information only.
Any questions? councillor Dyer.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Can I, because I appreciate this is still being populated at the moment, can I propose that perhaps in 12 months' time, and I appreciate we have the annual scrutiny review, but there's a review of the scrutiny functions of the county council, given the changes in the constitution approved by council last week. I think it's only fair and reasonable that there is a review of the scrutiny functions of the county council in a year's time, just so we've seen how those changes have bedded in and we can see moving forward if they are providing a fit-for-purpose scrutiny arrangement of the council. So could that be scheduled in for March, April time next year after we've had about a year of the changes in play?
Yes, we'll certainly look at that. councillor Brooks.
I'll second that proposal, Chair.
Okay, suggested proposal. I move that the report be received and noted. Can you please raise your hands if you agree? Anyone disagree? Any abstentions? It's passed. This concludes the business of the meeting. Thank you everyone for your attendance.